Agenda for us?
Today, we have the Board of Equalization meeting to be held prior to the regular City Council meeting. And we have our regular items for our consent agenda. And I will not be calling any items together for this agenda.
Okay. And I think we brought some items from our last meeting to take action on?
We do. We had removed three items for our pending list. We have in Section 5 ordinances and related resolutions for action only. Items 5A and 5B are related, but I will be calling them separately when we vote.
And are there any amendments to these agreements?
I don't have any.
Oh, this is in 88 and Holdridge?
Yes.
Are there any amendments to that?
They came up with an individual agreement between the neighborhood and the developer. So they have a written agreement and it's already all signed between them.
Okay.
So you're saying it's private, not necessarily?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Okay, and then on that, those two items, I will recuse myself and then Richard will take over on those, when we vote on those two items? Is it just two?
Mm-hmm.
Two, okay. All right. Was there anything else?
Nope, that's all I have at this time.
Okay, that's pretty easy. All right. Do we have Steve Sheridan from the Center for People in Need? Okay. Welcome, Steve. Thank you for coming down.
Where do you want?
You can come right up front on the side that has that pink sign-in sheet, but you don't need to sign in because you're already on the agenda.
Okay.
So thank you for coming down. I know this is a very challenging time, certainly for you and for the growing need in our community for food.
Yes.
And in case anybody doesn't know it, Steve is from the Center for People in Need, and you are busier than all get out.
That we are, that we are. I appreciate you allowing this time for me to come in and speak to you for a little bit with some of the challenges that we've been working on. And definitely, you know, Council City member Raybold was kind of to invite me to come and speak to you. So just kind of a little bit of a feedback, we used to do food distributions twice a week, Tuesdays and Fridays, and we'd see, you know, several hundred families during that, during that week, and we had four offsites as well. Well, we serve, you know, low-income families, 180% of the poverty level. So, you know, these are people that really need our services. And so when the virus hit, obviously that changed how we handled things. So we had to figure out in a hurry how we can manage to do this without having hundreds of people in our facility. And so we came up with the idea of doing an offsite drive-through method. And it's with a few bumps and bruises and a few backaches and things like that, we've kind of figured out, and we've kind of got this down to a science now. We see over 1,200 families a week that come to our facility. Like I said earlier, we used to do twice a week. Now we've changed to a model of every day from 10 to 1, and an additional 4 to 6 to capture some of the working poor, so we can capture some of those folks coming off of work. So it's been, it's been a struggle, but on the other hand, it's just, it's been very gratifying too, to be able to continue to serve the community and provide food. We've added 513 new households since we've been doing this. So obviously, the need just kept growing and growing and growing. And so we kind of had to walk through them through our process on how to, how to get our food. And because of the food bank, we've been running back and forth and with the cooperation of the food bank eating us food and us going there and picking up food. So it's been, it's been a challenge, and it's been rewarding all at the same time. I appreciate the Lancaster, Lincoln, Lancaster County Health Department, they put in a request so we could have the National Guard help us, because like I said, we're, some of us are getting a little older and it's a little bit harder. You haul apples, you think apples are pretty easy, but you do hundreds and hundreds of apples back and forth all the time, you get a little bit sore. So the National Guard just started helping us last week and moving forward till the end of the month, so we're hoping that that will continue. One of the challenges, of course, would be if they're no longer deployed to be able to help us, you know, then we're going to kind of be back into a situation where we're going to be kind of on our own, so needing help, and those kind of services are going to be what's really important to help us. The fatigue definitely is showing on a lot of our employees, myself included, with just getting over kind of a strain back. Some of our employees, we have ELL instructors and different instructors from our trade department. Everybody's now working on food and diapers, because we know the need of those two items are extremely important. We're running actually low on diapers. We've put in an order for diapers and there are several weeks out when we ordered them. So we're struggling trying to fulfill that need. The YMCA just did a drive for us, so we were able to get over 18,000 diapers that we can help the community. So right now, we're in business with food and diapers. You know, I wanted to really, the other thing we wanted to just, we really appreciate the efforts by our mayor, Gaylord Baird, to hold meetings to talk about food insecurity and what the need is for us. And that really helps us stay in touch with what's out there, and they're familiar with, you know, everything that we're doing and the need out in our, in our community. So it's a, it's a great, we're greatly appreciative of, you know, the council and the mayor and knowing what we're doing and all the help that's, that's out there. Lincoln's been a great community, and everybody stepped up, and the gratitude from our families as they go to, come through is pretty heartwarming. Today, we were handing out job, job flyers for a job fair tomorrow, and her husband had just lost his job. And so she, he was, you know, obviously, he's in need of a job, and she was in tears. So hopefully, that service can be of use for people as well. So I guess that's, that's my little speech. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Steve? James?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, I mean, Center for People in Need's in Northeast Lincoln, and I'm just so appreciative of everything that you're doing for people throughout the entire city, working, doing food distributions daily. I used to run a food distribution center when I was in high school and in college, and it's not easy lugging, you know, that food around. And so as a social worker, I've had a lot of families express the utmost gratitude for the work that you're doing, because those basic needs are so incredibly important, especially as everything else is going crazy. So thank you so much for being a rock, not only for Lincoln, but being a rock for the families and people who live in our city. I can't express my gratitude enough.
Well, I appreciate that a great deal. It's, again, it's hard work, but it's super gratifying to know that we're able to help our community and, and keep Lincoln fed. I mean, it's obviously a pretty high, high need right now, so we're, we're very grateful we're able to do that.
Any other questions for Steve? I have just a couple of quick ones. You said food and diapers. If people want to help out with both, where do they try to deliver diapers to, or where can they, you know, send a check? Is it to the food bank? Because I know you were in partnership with them.
Yeah, the, the food bank does a tremendous job of supplying us with the food. And we go through, we, we distribute about 25% of their food, so that gives you a kind of an idea of how much food that we go through. The diapers is another deal. Like I said, we put in a large order, and it's been probably a month or so now, and we just got an email back saying that due to the lack of inventory, we're not going to be getting any for a while. So the YMCA just did a diaper drive, so people were just buying them and dropping off at the four locations, and then we went and picked them up Friday. So that's, that's probably the best way to do it, just if the community wants to pitch in and buy diapers. We need sizes five and six mostly, because we're really, really running low on the larger size of diapers. We've got people, what, few boxes? We do have, they're, they're putting them together as quickly as we're, we're going through them. So those diapers are definitely a huge need. And if we, if you want to have somebody drop them off at our location, we'll certainly take them.
What about shortages of certain food types? Like, are you seeing a shortage of proteins or canned items or?
Right now, we're doing pretty well. I know the dry good stuff, we, we heard that might become an issue down the road. And so we're in constant communication with the food bank on what we have. Some of their orders are six weeks out, and so we may see kind of dips at times. The produce right now seems to be pretty good. We have more apples than probably Nebraska City at this point. But right now, we're doing okay, but I know the, kind of the future of the food, there's a concern out there that there may be some, some struggles receiving some of that down the road. Right now, we're doing okay, but, you know, things can change pretty quickly, so.
Yes, James?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure. So you said you need, you are in need of diapers, sizes five and six, and once they, they want to purchase them from like a store and then come drop them off physically?
Yeah, or if they want to have it on a different location, we can come pick them up, whatever people feel comfortable with. Right now, it's just really difficult to get to our building, because we have a very large tent out in our parking lot where we do food. And we do food every day from 10 to 1, and then 4 to 6 on Tuesdays. So getting cars through right now is a little difficult. But if, if we could have, you know, a different location that we could go pick them up, or after hours or something like that, where we can, you know, have access to more of the parking lot and we could get them, you know, we'll work with whoever.
So drop them off outside of distribution hours or give you a call for, to arrange pickup?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that would probably be the best way for us to get to.
Okay, I'm just typing up something.
Oh, sure.
Well, Steve, thank you very much for the updates and hanging there. We're grateful for the work you're doing to serve and feed our community that has this tremendous need in these really difficult times, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you for the update.
You bet. Thanks for having me.
You bet. Okay. Do we have Jennifer Brinkman and the mayor?
Mayor, we'll have to get her mask, she'll be right up.
Okay, should we go ahead? Jennifer, should we go with Pat Lopez next?
He's on the phone, he'll be right up.
Okay, sure, that's great. Let's, how about we jump to boards and committees? Do you want to go ahead and get one of those in before the mayor comes down?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. JBC, Bowers and Washington.
Well, we had a, pardon me. The Joint Budget Committee for Juvenile Services had a grant meeting, a grant deciding meeting about a week ago, 10 days ago. There were two, three times the request for funding that was available. We were able to spend every dime and would have spent much more if we could have. And a few dozen organizations were very successful. I was very impressed with the applications. Some organizations impressed by having four and five applications, some impressed with having one incredibly well-done. And I feel like we distributed the money equitably to both organizations who've been receiving the money for a number of years and to a number of new organizations who just knew grantees. So I thought we did a good job. I was very impressed by the work the staff had done prior to our taking a look at the applications. James, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you did a great job summing it out.
Okay. Any questions for Sandra James? All right, let's go on to Safe and Successful Kids, interlocal. Shobe and McGinnis was carrying it over from all the way back in April 6.
Yes.
Been such a long time ago.
Richard, if you don't mind, I'll start and you fill in the gaps that I missed something? So we had our meeting, we met here in the chambers. It was, began as a interlocal Zoom meeting, because one participant was unable to make it, but we had the same technical difficulties we'd had in the chambers the first time we tried a Zoom meeting. It didn't work out well. So we continued with our meeting. We, the biggest thing we talked about was the update of the memorandum of understanding. Since the interlocal was put in place, the state legislature came into session and passed some new standards statewide for SROs. And we modified our MOU, lots of acronyms there, to be in compliance with the state. So we did that adjustment. And then we talked mostly about the budget. And it was, a preliminary budget was put forward, and I want to remind everybody that some of the parameters that are on our budget is we can spend no more than 30% on school resource officers and at least 40% on preventative services, as in counseling and entities like that. They presented a budget which had a 3% increase in one area and a 4% in the other. It was scheduled to be presented to the public on April 23 at a public hearing, but we decided we would skip that because of the virus, and we'll have that at a later date. We postponed that meeting to later. There was not much else. We, there was no one in attendance from the public. We had a healthy meeting with a good presentation by Mr. Neal from the school board. What'd I miss?
Nothing.
Yay!
Went pretty quick, other than technical problems.
Yeah. Questions, comments, discussions, accusations, suggestions?
Have, have some of the community and cultural centers had a chance to review some of the language that was adopted by the Nebraska Legislature? Do they concur with the guidance for the school resource officers?
I don't remember any conversations relating to that. The changes were not that great. I think, I thought I had a copy pulled up. And I don't remember them off the top of my head, but there was no mention that anyone expressed any opposition to it.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing then. Okay, great. Any other questions for Benny or Richard? Okay, DLA, McGinnis and Ward.
Well, let Tammy do. You were on different meetings together.
We were, we were.
I split it up into two different Zoom meetings, because of the large boards. Basically, it was just to update everybody about what they're doing for downtown and how they're doing it. And then a large part of it was the budget that I believe they voted in to pass to bring to us here in the near future for the BID district and for their maintenance budget. So we should be seeing that here shortly. What else did you guys talk about at your meeting?
We gave, well, it was, the budget was the focus, but we, there were a lot of kudos, and I think we'd be remiss not to just, okay, once more, thank the DLA for all they did immediately at the time of the pandemic, when they developed the curbside assistance for customers and a lot of signage downtown and other great things that they've done. Richard, I don't know if you can add to that, but they really did spring into action in a lot of ways.
Yeah, the thing I thought was very interesting, we went around to everybody to say, okay, how's your company handling this and what, and what's going on? And I think to a T, all the large companies are basically vacated their offices. Huddle, they said they may have five, 350 there. Olson and Associates, I know, they try to not have more than one or two people in their office. I've noticed that downtown, it's pretty much kind of a ghost town. A lot of those businesses that serve, the people that work downtown, I think, are having a tough go right now, and they probably will, but.
And I would just add too, the DLA on First Friday, last Friday night, for their usual art walks, they did a video Zooming for some of the local artists in downtown. If you didn't see that on Instagram, you really need to take some time when you're scrolling through in your recliners and check it out, because they really have gone above and beyond to help downtown businesses during this time, so. Richard's right, there's a lot going on, or not going on, so.
Not much going on. You know, if you need to find a parking spot, now's the time.
Now's the time.
Yep. I, I think we have our mayor and chief administrator, what?
Luther is here too.
Oh, okay.
And if you're going to park downtown, don't feed the meters, get a ticket, the city could use the revenue.
Okay. Whoever would like to come forward first, Mayor Gaylord Baird or Pat Lopez, whichever your schedules dictate, anybody. We're thrilled to have, have you in attendance.
I think they're arm-wrestling at a safe distance. No.
Welcome, Mayor Gaylord Baird. Thank you very much for joining us today. It's first Monday in May.
Good afternoon. It's nice to be with you.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for this opportunity to just provide a quick update. We're seeing large numbers today, and we'll be, we reported out 30 this morning, and we'll have an update for you in just a bit at the briefing. We're still doing investigations, so it's going to be a big day. The 30 that came in, that were reported out this morning, were actually received late last night, so today's number's going to look really large, in part because the 30 that came in late last night were reported this morning, just so you know. So of course, that's, we spent a lot of time this weekend looking at our numbers and consulting with infectious disease experts from Johns Hopkins, from UNMC, looking at federal criteria for reopening, and so we're actively discussing what makes sense for our DHM, and would appreciate your input on that as well. Of course, some of the concerns, you'll, Pat Lopez can speak more about these, but the outbreak in Crete has implications for our county, because a number of folks who have tested positive associated with that outbreak live here. And while it's a known outbreak, that, that works to our advantage, but what we don't want is for those folks who have it, who live here, to then become part of a, you know, widening community spread where it's more difficult to identify the virus's tracks and to stop it in its tracks. We will be convening with faith leaders this week via Zoom to talk to them about their plans, because today is the, the state DHM that goes into effect that allows for an exception to the 10-person gathering rule for houses of worship. So we'll be speaking and reaching out with them about the guidance and trying to field any questions or concerns and to help them do that as safely as possible. We, of course, are feeling both the public health and the economic impacts of this pandemic, and you were all briefed on that, and there was the article in the paper, and so we're going to be spending quite, quite a bit of time this week trying to hone the, the budget, trying to shore up cash in the current fiscal year to protect going into the next fiscal year, and developing the budget that is scheduled to be released on June 15. We are grateful to a couple members of our congressional delegation. Congressman Bacon led a bipartisan effort, to which Congressman Fortenberry signed on to. They have proposed a bill in Congress that we hope will be heard soon. They're not in session this week, but hopefully, we'll resume next week and have the opportunity to consider flexibility in the use of CARES funds for states and municipalities to address revenue losses associated with COVID-19. And I think this is going to be specifically focused on potentially preventing cuts to the budget that supports first responders. So that's hot off the presses today. And we are, of course, supportive of that kind of a bill and have been working with the Nebraska League of Municipalities and speaking with the federal delegation and trying to explain what, just, just how problematic it is. Have shared the article that you brought up, Councilwoman Raybold, about the cities that are most vulnerable to budget impacts based on the elasticity of their revenue sources and on a list that the Brookings Institution came up with of 27 cities that were most vulnerable. We were number 19. So we, of course, are seeing external confirmation of the risks to the Lincoln budget. With that, I guess I would open it up for any questions you may have. I know Director Lopez is here to, as well, to speak to you.
Any questions for mayor?
I don't have a specific question. I have, of course, a couple of concerns. It all has to do with the increasing numbers that we're seeing and also sort of the adjacency of the outbreak in Crete and its impact on Lincoln, and just my encouragement that we, we carefully consider relaxing our DHM, because I know our numbers are going to go up for a few more days, and I just don't want us to open up so early that we encourage or cause public relaxation. We've been so diligent and so conscientious as a community. I'm so proud of everyone in Lincoln who has taken care of each other and themselves, and I just don't want to risk our health as a community, because we're all anxious. I'm anxious as well as everybody else to take off my mask and go play and interact, but I want us to be smart, so smart.
Agreed, agreed.
Well, mayor, I know that we will have further budget discussions as we move, move forward with dealing with some of the things that we're seeing, and we will hear our March sales tax revenues, we'll know them probably mid-May, is that correct?
This month. I don't have an exact date for you, but yes, I can find that out. Okay.
I'm sure we'll have more to talk about.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Or less to talk about, perhaps. Would be a more appropriate way to describe it.
Or less to talk about, yes. Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you so much for your.
Mayor Gaylord Baird.
Cheer for the city.
Okay. We will have our interim health director, Pat Lopez. I love watching them maintain this appropriate physical distancing as they pass each other. Great role models, like always. Welcome. Let's have the good news first, okay? What's the good news? Okay.
She's awful quiet.
All right, well, then just tell it to us.
The good news is our community's working well today. And we have a lot to be proud of and grateful for. Can you hear me through this?
Yes, we can.
All right.
Sounds a little muffled, but we certainly can hear you.
I'll loosen it just a little. It's hard when you wear glasses, because you get fog.
I've noticed that.
Fog up.
Okay, so the mayor talked today about the 30 new cases and then the additional ones. So we're up 92. Brian's been doing a lot of, I can't, sorry. This material's a little thick, so I'll get short of breath. Brian's up, been helping us doing testing in Crete. They've done multiple sites, multiple events there, and they're willing to go back again if we need them to. Our do additional testing here, as so is CHI. The CHI drive-through is consistently raising the numbers that are going. is consistently raising the numbers that are going in. We had almost close to five hundred tests done between Brian and CHI this weekend, so that's really good. And as you all were talking about, our cases have really peaked in this last week, and primarily a lot of our cases were still doing investigation but are related to Crete, to the Smithfield plant, and those, direct workers and then their families. So in Nebraska, we've had five thousand six hundred and seventy-five confirmed cases, seventy-eight deaths, and sixteen of those deaths were in Douglas County and twenty-eight in Hall County and Grand Island, which I think says a lot when you think about it. So you've noticed that there's been multiple outbreaks in the meat processing plants across the state. Dakota County is huge in what's happening there, but Dawson up in Lexington and then in Hastings, there's also a plant. We've done a lot of work with both, there's a Tyson plant, a chicken plant in Waverly, and then Smithfield has the old, the Cooks plant, we worked with them, and they're both doing really good jobs. They have a lot of great processes in place that have been in place for some time, so I feel very hopeful we'll be able to really keep things in check there. So, a couple things I wanted to tell you about. We're meeting with the cultural centers, we've been meeting with them, and we're working with them to, and we'll probably call in others, to develop some kind of a process so we can support families to stay at home and stay in the home that need to quarantine and isolate so they don't have to go out for groceries and other things and see what other resources they need. That's one way to prevent the spread across the community. We've also are working with long-term care, and we have regular meetings with them, and actually we host, all the health departments across the state have come in to talk, and so we're bringing in more. And it's been a really very positive interaction to be able to have the local health departments and long-term care across the state, shared learning opportunities. The other thing is, we're gonna have, I think you all heard, the hundred and fifty tests a day from LabCorp available now in the community, but Brian and CHI have both been ramping up, even doing more. Test Nebraska started today in Omaha and Grand Island, so we're learning as process goes. Those are all done by the Guard is set up to do that, so we're seeing where that is at. We got the recommendations, we're now analyzing from the guidance we put out for restaurants and hair salons and massage therapists and tattoo artists last week, and so we're analyzing that now. And the mayor mentioned we're gonna do a Zoom with the faith community tomorrow to talk with them. So I'll stop there.
Are there any questions for Pat? Richard?
Pat, I was out and about and went around behind the VA hospital, and looked like they were set up for testing, to do dry-through testing in the back. Have you heard about that at all? Okay, they had different zones and testing stations that you had.
Really?
Yeah. So I thought that was kinda interesting. I don't know if it's been used because I was there after hours, but.
Well, that's good to know. Usually, we just get a notice the night before.
They're federal, right?
Right, and, but we have to coordinate.
Okay, and then the Test Nebraska, is that gonna be in Lincoln, or have you heard, or what are they?
We don't know. I've asked the governor. I've talked to him and said, we have testing capacity now, so if they have people that are registered from Lincoln, we'd sure like to get them in now if they wanna test, and we could do that, but I haven't gotten any information yet.
Okay, looking at Tammy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Pat, with long-term care, who is it you work with across the state then? Is it the Nebraska Healthcare Association?
Yeah, and Leading Age.
Okay, and those are daily meetings?
No, usually once a week.
Okay, okay.
They have, you know, three times a week, to be honest, Tammy, they all have to be on a call with the state.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. No, thank you for that.
Well, ours is more of a, the local helping the local.
Gotcha, yeah. Couple more questions. Are you concerned at all about the Utah testing and what we've been reading about those tests, or does that affect what we're doing in Lincoln and Lancaster County, or do you know?
Well, we're still learning about it. We haven't gotten very much information.
Because that's the Test Nebraska, correct? Okay. Okay, and lastly, you and I talked a little bit about this last week, but I'm still kind of concerned and mostly wondering on the fourteen-day timeframe, now that our numbers keep going up and going up and we know why. Do you still feel that it's feasible that that will be a measure for Lincoln and Lancaster County to go two weeks before we can really have a solid recommendation about what our world looks like when our tests or our results start to slow down, our numbers start to stabilize?
Yes, you know, I've spent hours talking to the team and getting recommendations from other public health leaders and all of that I want to do, and there is really no clear can answer, and you know, the fourteen days is one measure, but I certainly don't feel comfortable right now. I mean, when we see the number going up, now, you know, another way that we look at it, if we're sure that this is like an outbreak within the pandemic and that we have measures in place to control it, that's another consideration. And then looking at the, you know, what's going on, how far do we continue our measures, being a little more restrictive until like the thirty-first, and what's the impact of that? Those are all things that weigh very heavily on me and looking at this.
Right, thank you.
Madam Chair. First, you gave a number of total casualties or fatalities in the state of Nebraska. What was that number and how many of those are in Lancaster County?
We've had one.
We've had one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, all right, the next thing is, just trying to wrap my head around these daily reports of how many people tested positive. Am I understanding correctly, but the people being tested are generally self-selected, in that they're saying, I've got, I think I've been exposed, I think I've got symptoms, I think.
Right, it's people with symptoms.
Okay, and so this really isn't a sample across the community at all?
No.
And so we would expect, since the people are self-selected, saying we've got symptoms, then we expect those numbers to be pretty, pretty high, right?
Well, they would go up, but then you also have to look at the positivity rate, which tells you more too about the, how many tests you've done.
That's what I wanted to get to, the positivity rate.
And so it's the positivity rate, and I haven't calculated today, but like we ended up Friday at like sixteen point seven percent, which you don't wanna be in a double digit.
But that's of a self-selected group.
That's people with symptoms.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So it's not just a sample across the city. We haven't been able to do that because we have had such limited testing available, and there's still, there's really still no clear guidance on should you be just testing, you know?
Sandra?
I think that's sort of my question. So I know that every, every week, it looks like both Brian and CHI have more capacity, and so if you've got a symptom, you can go to your doctor or to the health department and get a referral. With the Test Nebraska, do you need to go through the same procedures? If we get Test Nebraska here in Lincoln or Lancaster County, will you need to do the same kind of thing, or is it more of the broad testing that gives?
That's a good question.
Yeah, okay.
What we understand is that if you do Test Nebraska, I've gone in there to look too because we don't, but you still, they're looking at those high priority categories first, then they're looking at people with symptoms. So basically, it's still screening the same way. It's not, anybody can go in and get a test.
Okay.
We're not there yet, I'm not saying, you know, I could be standing here and tomorrow we hear that we are, I don't know.
Okay, and then I read something in the paper, The Washington Post actually, yesterday, and it made me pause because it was an un, it wasn't anything that we would have planned before, and one of the things that it's talking about is that with so many restaurants closed, the incidence of rats moving away from restaurant areas and dumpsters into residential areas, I don't know if we even have much of a problem with that ever, but it just hit me as, oh gosh, who knew? Wouldn't that be an interesting thing to track? And so, you know, in DC, the metro area, they're really looking at that issue and coming up with ways to combat that.
I feel, one thing I feel sure about is that if that started happening on Lincoln, we would know because environmental health would be getting a lot of calls.
Fantastic.
So far, that hasn't.
All right, that's something that kept me up last night, but thank you, I appreciate that.
We definitely get calls about things like that, and I haven't heard an uptick at all.
Okay.
Richard?
Real quick, there's, I talked to a friend of mine who happens to be a physician up at UNMC, and he said, you better be wearing masks because they're starting to see a little more community spread than they had in the past. And he said, is that one of the factors, big factors that we look at if it's a community spread or incident, like a meatpacking plant, it's kinda coming from one thing, because once it becomes a community spread.
And which is what we have now, and that's why we're looking at these cases so much too. You know, it's one thing when we can track a certain number to a location where there's an outbreak and then it spreads because they have family members in that, versus if we have a doubling of cases and it's out in the community and we don't really know, there's no locus of where it came from. But we are gonna be really strongly urging people to use masks, and no matter what we do, if, you know, I wanna give the message, if you take a pill every day, you have an underlying health condition, don't go out into crowds, only go out for your essential items. If you're older, stay home, don't be going to church, don't be going out and doing those things because we know this virus is gonna be around for a while, so we have to figure out how to work within it, but we have to protect ourselves.
Just follow up real quick.
Richard, yeah.
My wife, this kind of keeps her up at night, and she's been pretty worried because she says I'm one big underlying health problem.
That's what I tell my husband too.
The only other thing that's really bothering her a lot right now is the coyotes in the neighborhood, and we've got little dogs, so, what, I mean, what should somebody do if they, there's not a whole lot you can do. You can't trap them or do anything.
And the best thing, we have some guidance that we give, and a lot of it's making sure you don't have food and other things out in your yard, and you know, this is gonna sound a little harsh, but I would not let a small dog out.
Well, we've got a small dog too.
Yeah, in the yard with them around, and this is a time of year when they start, I guess they've been here long enough, they're starting to come back. That was one of the things. But we do have a little guidance, so I'll give us some.
That'd be great.
Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Lopez, I got quizzed this morning by a coworker saying, so next week, the city's gonna do something different. I'd like to give you a chance to talk about the website and the updates on when the directed health measures change.
If they change.
If they change, yes. So the city's website, is that the best resource for the community to go to?
And, yes, it is, and we'll notify you too when they change, so you'll have information when constituents contact you. But we are gonna have to do a change, you know, we have a directed health measure until the sixth, or till tomorrow, we'll have to make a change and continue. And our big decision point is, you know, the governor's made his announcement, but we have continued to talk with him, and we've expressed concern because right now with that change coming and our curve, you know, is going up, so. He will know if there's a change that's gonna happen.
I appreciate your effort and you continue to work with the governor and try to do what's best for the residents of Nebraska. Thank you.
James?
Pat, I've known you for a couple of years, and I feel like I know you pretty well, and that's one of the reasons why I trust you so much for everything you're doing at the Health Department, and that's why I also get a little, why I become a little concerned when I hear people in our community start talking about and interpreting things in a different way. And so I realize that a lot of people in our community don't know your expertise and your education and your background, and so I was wondering if you'd tell us what your formal education is and what your experience is and kind of, so we can take that back to people that we work with to really share, we really do have one of the best people in the state leading the Health Department. I mean, I know your experience, I know your education, but if you could share that with us so that way we can talk about the great people that we have leading the Health Department and the great people that are helping make these decisions and how that has earned our trust.
Well, thanks, James. I have, you know, I have over forty years' experience working with local public health and state, and I've worked statewide with all the health departments in developing our public health system in this state, actually worked on the legislation that developed them. I have a, you know, I have a bachelor's degree, and I have my master's in public health administration from UNMC. So I had preparation locally on what we're doing. I'm involved with a lot of national organizations. I'm a public health accreditation board site visitor, work with accrediting local health departments across the nation. And then I've had a lot of training in epidemiology, some at the graduate level and with CDC also, so some of the work that our contact investigators are doing are, that's something we've done for years in public health, and I've actually done a lot of that in myself individually and worked several outbreaks in the community. We had a measles outbreak. Some people may or may not remember that happening. I worked through the pandemic flu situation when we first started being able to do immunization. I worked on organizing and the delivery of that, getting people in the community around it and what we had to do. And I've done a lot of work working with communities of color and being really sensitive to what those needs are and been a very big advocate in getting funding actually at the state level for all of our communities to be able to address the adverse health outcomes. So that's a little bit.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate you sharing that because I think it's important that we trust your experience, we trust your expertise as you help lead the city and the county through this, so thank you for everything you're doing.
And I think, you know, it's really important for people to know, we look at models, and Councilwoman Christensen and I had this discussion too. We use a model every day to look at what's happening in our community, how many hospital beds we have, how many ventilators, when might we expect to peak, but models are just that, models, and we've had that discussion before, but we've never seen this before in our lifetime, so those are guidance. We use things like John Hopkins, you know, I think the mayor talked about that. We look at Bloomberg, all the things from the Association of City County Health Officials and State and Territorial Health Officers, and also in conjunction with conferencing with colleagues, so, across the nation. All that's happening, just trying to make sure we do the right thing. My goal is to protect the people in our community, and I've been passionate about that my whole career and I continue to be.
Thank you, Pat. We're grateful for everything you are doing right now and the expertise you bring to keep our community safe. We're grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay. I'm gonna go on down and I'm gonna skip the next two committee meetings, and if we have time, we'll get back to them. I did wanna discuss video conferencing and do kind of a quick assessment and review and kind of touch base with everyone to see if they felt it was successful. Like, you know, I really wanna thank Jamie Wentz and his IT department for being able to pull it off, but if anybody has any concerns, and I'll just say, I have concerns about going forward and meeting in the chamber, particularly when our numbers are on the increase. I know the mayor and the governor have said the, these last three weeks were critical, and we're just seeing our numbers. and we're just seeing our numbers increase at an alarming rate. And so I am concerned that we are meeting in public as other, other municipalities are continuing to use video conferencing as a way of conducting the city's business. So, um, I just wanted to reach out to everyone for their thoughts. James?
I think, um, when we met over Zoom, our technology, it worked. Uh, we were able to allow, uh, testimony to happen. We were able to, uh, get things done for our city and still keep our city safe. And as we continue to see, uh, cases come into our city and county, and as we talk about how we can not only keep each other safe, but how we can keep those that we live with and, uh, those that we may interact with safe, um, I think it would be a smart thing to do to continue to meet, um, over technology, uh, in an effort to do our jobs and keep our city safe.
Oh, Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Bowers, I appreciate all the things that I've said. I still have some concerns that our legal staff says there are some issues related to the legality of the meetings. I'm also concerned, and I did watch on video while you guys participated, that we're having the public come here, and I'm not sure how that makes the public safer when we hunker down and do our things from our remote locations, but still require the public to come here. I feel that just suspending the meetings would be a better way to go. Thank you.
Tammy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, to, uh, Councilman Schilb's point, which I think is very valid, and thank you for saying that. I was going to share during my, with Haymarket JPA report that last week, the JPA met, and, um, to Councilman Schilb's concern, we had, um, the public video conference in, and that was a new, um, this is the first time we've met that way. And so, um, we met remotely. The mayor was in the council chambers, but we accepted testimony from the public via Zoom. And so how that worked mechanically was they, meaning the, um, I think there were two people, but the one that testified had to register with our clerk's office by a certain, like, noon that day or whatever that parameter was. And at that time, we're given the link to Zoom, and then, um, that was monitored by the clerk's office and by, um, Lincoln TV City. And so that was a way where we didn't have to have the public come down to the chamber because, to your point, Councilman Schilb, why, why would we ask the public to do something that we're not doing when in fact, we are trying to protect the public and stay home, like, where, or wherever we are, to participate remotely, um, that way they can as well? And I think that is key. Um, and I also support Councilman Bowers', um, statement to, I think it's important that we continue to meet by Zoom, at least through the rest of this month, until, um, we know where these numbers are going. And to the Chair Rabel's point, they're increasing so steadily every day that I think it would be irresponsible for us to do anything less than to meet when we have those capabilities for technology. So, thank you very much.
Yep, I, I know in Omaha, the Omaha City Council does allow, uh, anyone to testify via Zoom, but they must contact the clerk, the city clerk's office by twelve noon of the day of their council meeting, and then they are given the password to participate in Zoom, and of course, they have the appropriate monitors in place. Uh, the same parameters that you have five minutes to, to speak on your item of interest, but I think that's, um, an interesting way that we'll allow and, and keep the public safer because I really, I do appreciate what they're doing, and I think it's something that we should consider doing as well to allow the public to, uh, call in, the clerk gives them the password, and then they can participate without having them come down. Richard?
That sounds very, sounds very interesting, uh, way to keep it open. Does the clerk have any say on who gets the password or who doesn't? That'd be my only question, because that becomes kind of an open meeting decision. Um, there's lawsuits out there right now about people being denied access to the public body. And so that would be the only thing that I would say, let's look into. That would be something that would be my only concern, is if it's the clerk that makes the decision or they just give it to everybody that asks. It'd be like signing in that we've done in the past, right?
And then the public is still, if they feel comfortable, they're still welcome to come down because we would still have the laptop set up there for those who want to come down and feel comfortable doing that. But for those that feel safer, they would be given the password, and I, there should be no qualifications, um, uh, but, you know, the remarks have to be germane to the issue that they want to talk on in general. Yes, Sandra?
I really like hearing that this is a possibility, that we have the technology and we can give passwords to folks. One of the things that, the only thing that really that's given me pause, and this was even before we made the decision to do, uh, video conferencing, was the fact that we had, um, eliminated or put on hold, um, the open testimony of folks on the second and fourth Mondays, um, of the month. And I would very much like to have that reinstated, and if we could reinstate that with Zoom, that would be, I think, wonderful, if we could allow folks who have some issue they want to discuss that is not on the agenda, so it doesn't change how we've had that before. But if the clerk could give them a password as well, so that we would have at least a moment, you know, twice a month like we have in the past, um, for the public to, to bring to us their issues, I would really like that a lot. I'd like to add that.
Yeah, Tammy?
Thank you. I think that, you know, I don't know why that wouldn't be possible. I've talked to, um, Brandon Kaufman, just briefly before today, as well to Jennifer Brinkman, so I think they're willing to accommodate it. It should not be any different than if we were meeting in person. I mean, we shouldn't deny the public that opportunity, and if that's available with technology, there's no, I don't see the reason why we would deny them that opportunity.
That would make me feel, um, very good.
I would support that, yeah.
So the second Monday, or the second Monday of the month would be next Monday, May eleventh, and then the last Monday of the month would be actually the following week, May eighteenth. We're having an evening meeting on May eighteenth.
Oh.
Because Memorial Day is May twenty-fifth, so.
Break that down.
Um, if someone wants to make a motion, then we can.
Can I add?
Yes.
I think the other thing that I just kind of want to throw out there is testifying is one way to get something on the record, right? We have, uh, people that you can send in emails, uh, go into councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov, and that's a written document that goes on the record also. And so testifying is just one avenue to get something on the record and to reach out to their representatives. And so, uh, it's not an end-all-be-all, there's still other avenues that people can use.
Richard?
Well, if we, if we start to go down this way, one thing that would make it a little easier for me maybe would be if we could meet sometime in person and/or do an emergency meeting so we could make some votes, that I would feel would, uh, solidify things a little more. So instead of going four weeks without being here in person, maybe we could go two weeks or even have, you know, on the eighteenth, we need to have the discussion about election of the chairs and the vice chairs, which need to be sworn in, uh, at that time. And I don't know if that would be a meeting that we could do in person or every two to three weeks, at least. We have developers and stuff that said they're putting off their, we have one today, they decided to wait until we met in person. So that'd be a way we could keep it going. Four weeks might be a lot.
I don't think, I don't think we swear in the chair or the vice chair, it's just by an assent of the majority of the voters.
Okay.
Of the council, the majority, so they don't have to be sworn in.
The mayor has sworn in the chair.
On the eighteenth? On that day?
Yeah.
On the election day? Okay.
In that meeting.
Following.
I see Jeff is in the back room. Jeff, do you, could you clarify that by any chance? And if not, then, I mean, if, if you're not a hundred percent certain, you can get back to us on that, too, because it's not until the eighteenth.
And I'm not a hundred percent certain. I don't have the, the, um, council rules with me today. I suspect if Councilman Christensen remembers a swearing in, then.
Well, you were sworn in by the mayor. Yeah.
I, I remember being sworn in, but that was only because I was, uh, re-elected. I don't remember being sworn in as individually as a chair.
I have a copy.
I can go ahead and look at that and give back to you.
Copy of the rules.
James got a copy. Got it right here.
Which kind of morphs into our next topic. I think we might go over a little bit. Oh, yep.
So there's some discussion about allowing the public to participate in the Zoom meeting. Would that change your position on the legality of our meetings via Zoom?
It would not. It is clear under state statute that the public can participate, um, through telecommunications. That is allowable under, under ordinary meetings.
There's some discussion about there has to be, even at remote sites, the public has to be able to access at different sites and different locations, spelled out in there, too. I just wondered whether that would change the status on whether that makes it more of an open meeting and more in compliance?
Uh, no, I don't think it would affect it at all, one way or the other.
I think the most important thing that we've also discussed, that it is in compliance with the executive order, there's a number of things that you have to publicly announce the way that, um, the public may access and provide public testimony, either in person like we have been doing, and now we'd like to add in-person as well as, as going, uh, and, uh, online and, and doing it via Zoom, getting a password to do that, in addition to coming down and, and providing public testimony. Um, we all recognize that this is a temporary situation, this is hopefully not going to be going on longer than, I would say, the end, end of May. I certainly hope that is the case, but, but while our numbers are increasing dramatically, I think we need to be cognizant of that and take, uh, the appropriate steps to not only safeguard the, the public, safeguard our families, and of course, the staff. Tammy?
I would move that we meet via Zoom for the remainder of the month and that we allow the public to register, to participate with our clerk's office by noon as a deadline or whatever works for the city clerk's office by the, um, on the meeting day.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Seconded by Sandra. Any, uh, further discussion? Benny?
Go first.
Well, I was gonna make an amendment that we would meet in person for the May eighteenth meeting, so that we could do some more business and do the swearing in if that's needed.
Second.
Discussion.
May? Okay, yes. I guess I'd like to, um, I'd like to get an answer on the swearing in, whether or not that has to happen, um, on that same day. And I certainly understand wanting to do some things face-to-face, but I think if we're all present, um, then we can do them, whether or not the presence is in the, in a room together or in a digital space together. Uh, and I don't, I, I, like Jane, I, I think that, you know, if our directed health measure was lifted, I would feel like we've met some other parameters, we, the numbers are going down, all those other things, and then, yes, we come back to meet face-to-face in the, in the chambers. But as long as our numbers are up, I really want to encourage us to take a pause on the face-to-face. Let's reduce that as much as we possibly can.
And I.
And I would encourage a full pause.
Yes, Tammy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I think to meet on May eighteenth does not satisfy our intent of, uh, being responsible and staying healthy and encouraging people to stay at home. That's only two weeks, and our numbers, we don't know what they'll be in two weeks. So my, I just go back to my motion of, uh, meeting by Zoom for the month of May, and, um, I would second what Councilwoman Washington said, we can reevaluate at the end of May.
Okay, and so is, uh, James?
No, I would agree also. Um, I was nervous about coming in today, May fourth, um, and I know that we felt an obligation to meet on May fourth because that's what we voted on last time. And so I'm nervous about setting a specific, we're gonna meet on May eighteenth because we don't know, uh, what that's going to look like. And, uh, if I can just address one thing that Councilwoman Washington brought up is, I did a little bit of research, and there's nothing in our city charter that mentions, uh, swearing in for those positions. And I think it would not be, uh, smart of us to meet for a ceremonial purpose that we can put off later.
And I, I just want to add that my concern is that we're open for business. It's not doing business as usual or business as normal. We're open for business, so if any developer has a project, we're not in it to delay it. You know, we want to move business forward because we're gonna need some of these additional development dollars to help us get through what we're going to project as a budget crisis. Um, we're not in it to delay any business development deal, we want to keep moving them forward. Um, if they don't feel comfortable with, uh, video conferencing and transacting business in this new way that is available to all businesses, many businesses that I work with do this, they don't want to send their, their salespeople to our corporate office to discuss business, we'll just do it via Zoom. Um, I want to say that we're open for business. Bottom line, we're open for business, we're not out to delay any projects. If any developer doesn't feel comfortable, then the applicant will, will have to step forward and request that delay. Uh, but I intend to keep doing the, the work that people have entrusted us to do, but in the safest way possible, to protect as many people as possible. Um, so I think, are there any other comments?
I guess I would, I would add that there could be, um, I am open to a caveat that says if the directed health me, measure is lifted, I am more than willing to come back into chambers and meet face-to-face.
Okay, so I think what we have is, uh, an amendment proposed by Richard and seconded by Roy, um, saying only coming back on the eighteenth. And I think we probably should vote on that, and then we can tack on your comment to Tammy's motion. Okay, so, uh, let's take a vote. All those in favor of coming physically back into the chamber on May eighteenth, and I'm just gonna take a roll call vote, Tammy?
No.
Roy?
Yes.
Sandra?
No.
Jane? No. Uh, Richard?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Benny, yes? And James?
No.
Uh, the vote is four noes, three yeses. The amendment does not pass. And then Sandra, you suggested, um, the issue that we're talking about is not meeting until the big.
Is that an new amendment, or?
I don't, I, it's, it's, I don't know if it's an amendment. I think it, it might be an amendment, because I was thinking that, you know, we'd go another three weeks. I realized that we have Memorial Day, so Tammy's, um, uh, motion makes sense. So if we were to say, um, we will meet, uh, by video through the month of May unless the directed health measure is lifted, at which point, I, I'm all right, you know, because I know that we're not gonna lift it. We just talked about how much we trust Pat Lopez. We're not gonna lift that DHM until we know that we're in a safer situation.
Okay, so is everybody clear on what is being proposed?
Just question, point of clarification for, um, you, Councilwoman Washington, which do, we're talking about a state DHM or a local DHM?
The local. Oh, please, the local.
Yeah, let's, could we insert that to make me certain? Because that could be different.
That was not motioned and seconded, that's still just.
I understand. We're still trying to decide whether or not this makes sense as a motion.
Well, Tammy did make a motion, and then Sandra seconded that, that we'd not meet, uh, until, we'd not meet through the end of May, and then we had the amendment that failed, and then this amendment, or I guess conditional, should the local DHM be lifted, then we are certainly welcome to reconsider and we can reconvene a meeting. Um, and Richard and I can say, look, we're gonna reconvene a meeting if the local DHM is lifted. Is that correct?
That's what I mean, the local, yeah.
Okay. And with also the caveat that we are going to invite the public to participate via Zoom.
That was part of the original, yeah.
Yep, and that we're gonna invite the public to participate via Zoom for the public hearings on the second and the last.
Yes.
Meeting of the month. Is that, okay?
Yes.
Is everybody clear on what we're trying to do?
I don't think there was ever a motion for Mrs. Washington's conversation. There was never a motion for that, yeah.
There was not a motion on the second and fourth open conversation.
Point, point being is that if the DHM is lis, lifted, even if it's not, any two council members can call a meeting with the city council.
Yeah.
The mayor.
Emergency meeting.
Yep, the mayor can call a meeting at the city council, so.
And you have to state the emergency.
So that conversation is really not.
Actually, in the charter, it doesn't say anything about having an emergency. We can just.
Call.
Call a meeting for the city council.
Yeah.
Well, it's not that we're not having meetings of the city council, we're doing it video conferencing. So how is that gonna be different?
They could call a meeting for Thursday.
At the end of a DHM.
But that doesn't mean we attend, because you're not attending the meetings now.
Right, but I'm just saying that two members of the council or the mayor, at any time, can call a meeting of the city council. Doesn't have to be an emergency.
But if we're gonna be voting, we're saying that we're going to be having our meetings.
Our regular.
Via video conferencing and Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
So if you call a meeting, that's fine, but we're gonna meet via Zoom if that's what the majority of the city council consents to.
I'm trying to.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to narrow my amendment to my, I'm gonna formally make a motion to amend that we would come back face-to-face after, we could come back earlier than June if the local D H M was lifted.
Okay, is there a second to that clarification?
Second.
Seconded by Ward. Any other discussion? Okay, I will call the roll. This is an amendment. Okay, we'll start at the other. James?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, Jane, yes. Sandra?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Okay. And Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. So, that seems like every, that carried seven to nothing. All right, so, now on the main motion.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, let's, Tammy?
Yes.
Roy?
No.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Richard?
No.
Benny?
No, thank you.
Okay, and James?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, again, that carried four to three. So, we will continue to meet video via conferencing unless the local D H M is lifted.
Prior to June one.
I'm sorry?
Prior to June first.
Prior to June first. Okay, we'll move on to discuss election of chair and vice chair. And for those that choose not to participate via video conferencing, I think it is the intention of the board as we, as a council body that Richard will be the chair-elect and the vice chair-elect is James Michael. So, if either of you are not going to be able to be here on May eighteenth, you're gonna get elected probably nevertheless. So, I think that is the intention that we will. And if Richard, for any reason, you choose not to participate via video conferencing, then James as the acting chair after we vote will step in and conduct the business of the city council. Is everybody clear on that one or comments?
Just the conversation about the vice chair. Was that at one of the meetings, was that a public discussion about Councilman Bowers being vice chair?
I think...
I haven't participated in that.
It hasn't been a public discussion at all on any of this. That's why we're talking about it right now.
I had plans to nominate Councilwoman Ward as for vice chair's position.
Okay, then I guess we can either talk about this again at our next director's meeting next week, and then we can work that out.
You can actually talk about it offline and just have the vote on the eighteenth.
Okay, well, I would encourage that discussion to take place offline, and if there's any other concerns, then we can bring it back up on our meeting next Monday. The other item, is there any further discussion on this? I don't want to...
No, no, thank you.
Discuss council board and committee assignments. Angie sent out what the current assignments are, and I, I mean, if anybody has a burning desire to change, you can articulate that. But typically, go ahead, Roy.
In practice, council members who like their assignments can keep their assignments. And, but there's been trading in the past as well. So, when someone say, well, I'll, I really want to be on that committee, and they'll do a trade. But, it's been the practice that if you like the committees you're on, you get to keep them.
And sometimes if the chair takes over and they have already too many committee assignments,
Right.
you can...
Then they trade some.
You can trade and ask to...
Because there are a number of committee assignments that come along with being chair.
Being the chair, right.
Right, whether you want them or not. That happens, so...
Well, I encourage everybody to talk amongst yourselves if you have some concerns about yours or some, something else. If you're excited to be on something, let us know.
I have no concerns about the committees I were assigned. I would like to say publicly, I would love to be on the Parks Committee. I really would love to take the Parks Committee. But, I know that you have a strong interest as well. You can refer to me as Councilwoman Ranger.
Can we really? That sounds like fun.
Okay, well, we can, we can certainly
Councilwoman Boy Scout.
Have that discussion offline as well. So, we're gonna hold the items PRT and West Haymarket JPA to next week if that is okay with everybody because we went over on this. And I'd like to adjourn, and we will take, how about we adjourn for five minutes to get, everybody has a break? Okay, we will be back at three twenty.